Good evening, welcome everybody to tuning into tonight's town hall meeting. It's the second town hall meeting that CLOL is sponsoring. Um, to the upcoming election, which is just about three weeks away on June 22nd. The 22nd, this is for the city council election and my name is Israel Klattman. I am a Crown Heights resident. I'm actually born in Crown Heights on Atlantic. Um, Interfaith Medical Center, 501 Atlantic. I think I'm one of the only people I know that was born in Crown Heights. Born and bred, still living here, 35 years later. I am a married man with my wonderful wife Tom. We live here in Crown Heights. That would be beautiful voice. Um, I work in wholesale electronics. I'm also a Hasidic art dealer. And I am family president of the congregation here in Crown Heights. 12 years we've been around since our headquarters. Just, we did it over a couple of months ago, both the Vesh Center and together with some other friends, they're getting involved in some local political activity. Obviously not affiliated with any religious organization, if you don't give endorsements here, because I happen to be saying some other things I'm involved with. Um, I am joined tonight this evening with Hector Robertson. Robert- Robertson, Robertson. I do often make that mistake. How many times have I appeared Hector Robertson? Who resides here in Crown Heights. I was looking over his website the last few days. He's involved in a lot of community block, block party organizations and I'm sorry? Better organizations. Um, I understand by trade you're a, your occupation here.
I work for a pharmaceutical company.
You're very involved in the community. Now, the community, the council, community council, to be a council member, we're talking tonight about the District 35. And I work through the maps of Crown Heights, the Jewish community of Crown Heights keeps growing. Many different areas, a lot of love with scars and a lot of Jewish worship. But the overwhelming majority of Jewish Hasidic community, um, in Crown Heights, for most of the Chabad Levados community, familiar, the Yehudah Levados. And they do reside in this, in the 35th District, Council 35. Council 35 is a very, very, very popular council and I'm saying broader based community is very popular because Jeffrey Davis of West memory is very, very dear friend of the community. Is he Jeffrey Davis? Jamesy Davis was our, was our council member. His brother Jeffrey, yeah, he's a close friend of the community. And Letitia James was the Attorney General today, very famous. She was, she presided by the community, um, 35th District. And today we're very famous because Maury Kumpo is the current city council and also the, she's the, she's the head of the city council of the whole New York City. She is the majority leader of New York City, Camp City Council. Now, New York City Council is made up of 51 districts. 51 districts. Most districts are made up of between two and four communities. Most of them are three, two to four communities. So Crown Heights, for example, is the, is Crown Heights.
Which is 43, 50 Hill, Prospect Heights, Crown Heights, and also that stuff, that's five.
So it's a tremendous, tremendous role representing every single, um, and spectrum, every group, you know, every race, every race, everybody, you know, this is a very, 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 but again, it's a lot, a lot, a lot of Hasidic Jews and we're here tonight with the Jewish community, proud Jewish community. Um, this is also a very historic election that 30, 35 out of the 51 are up for reelection in city council. Because they, they were terminated without us. So Maury Kumpo has to leave, even if the overwhelming majority of her constituents would vote her in, she has to leave. Which is 35 out of 51, the overwhelming majority of the entire city council is going to have an entire new face in a couple of months. And the June 22nd election, we all know how it works over here. Whoever wins the primary pretty much wins in the general election. I mean, that's just how it's been around here in the book from the last 35 years that I've been around. That's how I see how it usually is. In the Democratic Party, the city council District 35, there was, I think, seven candidates that are running.
Seven or eight.
I thought I saw on the website today seven, but I heard there's one that's still lingering around there. I have no idea where his name is. Okay, and when's the deadline for the name on the ballot?
Oh, that's old, it's past.
It's past, so seven of the Democratic candidates. Seven people that are going to be writing ballots over this one, Nikki Melz, I was gonna get a lot of names. I'm saying, seven people that are going to be on the ballot in the Democratic primary, were out tonight to have with us one of the candidates. Mr. Hector Robinson. And we could, I could not interview all seven, but I think that the questions that the constituents have sent in to me. I've got a lot, a lot of my emails, my text messages, my WhatsApp, my Facebook messengers have been buzzing through the roof the last couple of days. And we had a couple of questions, the questions I got the most, you know, over and over and over again, I'm like, yeah, I got that, I got that, I got that. We have to bring that to the table. I think that would be the best thing to bring to people's attention. So before we go into some of the questions and go through the back and forth of what there is to discuss, um, I have a general question. If you could tell us a little bit about your backgrounds and your family and what your up to these days and then we'll go from there.
Sure, thank you Israel. I really appreciate this opportunity. So I came from Panama.
Panama?
Yes, uh, I came from Panama. My mother was here when I came. I got married here in Brooklyn. I have two children. My wife works for the city. I work in private industry. Uh, I decided to become active in my, in my community after I saw that there were a lot of people that didn't have representation. Uh, or even the help that they needed to face adversities in their buildings. And so it catapulted me into being able to sit there and try to help them. Try to not be dissisted myself, uh, to see how things work. I finally learned how the city works with all of its quirks and all of its twists and turns. And what that did for me was to be able to, um, give everybody in my, in my immediate community the opportunity to join my organization, which is the Washington Avenue Black Association. Uh, because by doing this, I didn't guarantee them anything, but I, the one thing that I could tell them is that if we join together, we can actually benefit everybody by finding those resources. The main, the main thing that kept me going was that seniors didn't have those resources. And when you think about a seniors going through, uh, trying to figure out how the city works, they will never get anywhere.
Right.
So what I did was I bought the resources to them. I bought HPD, I bought DHC, I bought the precinct to come down and talk about safety. Uh, I bought every services that I could think about so that they didn't have to run around with it.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna actually touch on a lot of the things you just mentioned. Um, before I start going on to the next topic, I just wanted to ask you, what makes, what, what, how do you feel? What do you think, which, what do you bring to the table, starting with asking the most kind as way? What brings, what do you bring to the table more than the other six candidates? How do you find yourself to be more qualified?
Well, for one, there is a commitment to the community, right? I don't, I don't know the other candidates very well, but I do know some backgrounds about them. And I don't believe that they have the, the, the drive. So I think that is a very important thing. I mean, you can know a lot of people in city government, but if you really don't have the drive to help people, it doesn't really serve you much. Because people are looking for services, they're looking for help, they're looking for people that are committed to helping them. And so I don't see that in the other candidates. I see an opportunity to sort of like hobnob with the other, you know, elected officials, that kind of stuff. And I, I don't really see the commitment towards the people.
Very interesting. Um, you touched on affordable housing. So anything to do with housing or rent stability or Section 8s. In any community, it's going to get people like to really go out of their comfort zone. And there's so many different avenues to this question. But in my research, I found that in regards to affordable housing and Section 8s, now it's opening up again, the lottery is opening up again. Now, in order to be eligible for Section 8s or to affordable housing in communities, there's a AMI? AMI. And from what I understand, the AMI is basically saying that let's say you're a family of four. You know, husband, wife, two children, very common in America, in our community, husband, wife, and kids. But I'm saying, a, the perfect example is a husband, wife, two children, family of four. In this area that you would be representing where you elected the city council, District 35, which is majority of Crown Heights, and we had the other areas you mentioned. To be able to be eligible for any Section 8 housing or any assistance in affordable housing, a family of four would be entitled to nothing but they need around $78,000. Now, when I was a kid growing up, $78,000 sounded like a lot of money. You know, a child's money, and especially inflation 30 years later. I thought $78,000, being married for 10 years and having a family of three children. I will tell you that my wife and I, working two full-time jobs, both of us have real second and a little bit third jobs. Um, obviously, the majority of people that do what I do, I'm not going to go give my tax returns, make a lot more than $78,000. But if God forbid, we did make $78,000. After paying rent, which you would not be eligible for any housing, any Section 8s, that's the current law now. So you would be paying regular rent. Regular rents in our areas, all four neighborhoods that you represent, or like you said, a little tip of a fifth neighborhood. You would be paying on a two to three bedroom, you know, obviously you're not going to put a flatway floor or whatever. So if you want to live a little comfortably and still be squishy and whatever, but a two to three bedroom, you'd be paying roughly $3,000 a month rent. Get a good deal, fourth floor, no elevator, facing the courtyard. There are some good deals you'll find here and there, have all day long to plan the streets. Or find a landlord that's extra nice and isn't the charity. I had such landlords that took a lot less than the current rate, I'm not going to sit here and say it's on my, it's weird. But a regular, a fair price would be around $3,000. $3,000, you're looking at around $40,000 a year, $36,000, $40,000. So this is extra tax money. And after you pay rent, you probably will not have enough money to put bread on the table. Literally, you know, like milk money to put bread on the table, put milk in my kids' bottles. So my question is, do you agree with my, my constituents, my, the people that live in the community that wrote it to me, that the AMI numbers for Section 8 housing and government sponsored housing or city, and I found out that the money that comes to work building and funding some of these things come from, um, retirement funds, there's all different ways to grab government money. Above my pay scope, but, but there's a lot, you know this, there's a lot of ways of how to get affordable government housing besides federal and state. There's also both, both pension funds in the city evolved that they have ways of getting tens and tens of those stuff. But to make this question, to break down the question, what is your opinion on affordable housing, Section 8, becoming available to people that are very, very hardworking people that under the current laws are not entitled to anything?
Well, that, that is, that is exactly the problem that exists in the city. Is that when we look at the landscape of housing, uh, in our district, we realize that most of the constructions that have happened in our district is for families that are living above that AMI number that you just mentioned. Because you really can't afford one of those high rises apartments where those AMIs really plummet, char. I think that the city is falling short in that no one is thinking about, thinking outside of the box, if you will, on how to produce new affordable housing. There's just so many different ways of doing it and there's so many different things that you can think about. I was just toying with the idea the other day about buying, because now that we are almost at the end of COVID, there might be a lot of buildings that are in precarious situations right now. Buildings that have owners that were not able to pay their taxes moving into the pandemic. The city should be thinking about buying those buildings and try to convert those buildings into affordable homes for people that actually spend more than half of their salaries in rent. You know, that's a way of getting out of that whole thing about affordable housing and not necessarily depending on new construction. Which by the way, is going to get higher because every single material in construction today, it's gone, it's gone off the roof. And so we cannot expect the city to fix that problem in and of itself by just getting new developers to do new constructions. So we're going to have to think outside of the box. And that solution of buying buildings and not only that, but getting, getting, uh, getting land that is seeped on and be, and be able to build on those lands are ways for the city to get away from depending on building, building, new construction. Why? Because these guys want to make money. They're not building buildings just because it's fashionable. And so you're never going to get them to build on a certain A con.
So let me just rephrase this. Hector Robertson, Hector Robertson, on the record, not 60 minutes, but on the record, if you were in city council or any other future position that you have, a family in Crown Heights, any family, Hasidic family, African-American family, Latino family, hardworking family of four, they make $160,000, let's go to a high hundred, that according to the state and federal government here, some big zillionaire. Some big zillionaire, some corp, some, some, some Wall Street corporate executive type of number, that some people consider that is. Uh, if they're paying more than 40% of their income in rent, you're saying that they should be able to be entitled to a government subsidized housing that will make it more affordable? Of course. Okay, I just, when I saw all these numbers, I never heard anybody say, anybody running politics, they're going to help people that are classified by state and federal government for being wealthy and they'll still be able to be helped. Because the numbers, the numbers here are 78,000, there's areas that it's a lot lower.
Yeah, when you think about 78,000, 100,000, 100,000, you know, somebody making 60, 60 years. I mean, it may seem like a lot of money, but it really is.
Right, that, that's what I established. Another thing that a lot of people were in housing, that a lot of people wrote to me, I mean, there's literally people in our community, there are 70s and 80s that when they talk about this property, they choke up. And I don't know what you're talking about, because I don't own property yet. But a lot of people in the community bought condos in the 80s and in the 90s, very affordable condos, maybe 180, 190, 2, 250, 280. Even up to a couple of years ago, the mid 300,000, and that was considered a lot of money. And there were 20-year tax abatements, so they paid their mortgage every month, they're 18, 19, $2,000. A lot of these people are retired now. And the tax abatements is expiring and maturing, ever the proper terms. And on, let's say, a 1,500 square condominium, besides paying, they took out second mortgages, they fell on R. class, besides paying their mortgage, with their second mortgage, that one is they did with their mortgage, used as a piggy bank. And besides paying their homeowners association, condo association, and all those things are the utilities, they now lost their tax abatements and they're being taxed on small condos here in the community between 85 and 8500 and $13,000. This is crazy money and, I'm sorry. And what's even crazier is that people that own $2 million houses, beautiful, massive, 300 to 3500 square foot homes and have renters, sometimes two renters, which is a cat, it's a piggy bank, it's God bless them, it's a capitalist society, they take up their mortgage, they bought the house for $35,000. Their property tax is half of what a guy has of little condos trying to raise his family and he doesn't have a square inch to make any income off this condo. So I asked around, like, again, real estate's not my specialty. And I was told that a lot of the laws of how condos are taxed, you'll tell me because you're involved in the Real Estate Association, Block Association, I can assume that you know a lot about this topic. A lot of the laws about how condos are taxed in the state of New York or New York City, especially because you're running the city council, are based on laws preceding 100 years when very, very, very rich people, took about like rockers dollars, um, and Kennedys and Vanderbilts were setting up their homes in condos in Manhattan. Now, these condos have 26 bedrooms. Way balls in some of them, they host presidential balls, you know. People that are raising families in tiny little condos here in Crown Heights are being taxed by billionaires like the Koch Brothers on Park Avenue. I would love to hear your explanation. And again, Mr. Hector Robertson, as a elected politician, whichever form of government, one day you will serve it, um, what is your answer to all these tens of thousands of people that are crying?
Now, what you just mentioned sounds pretty gross to me, because I think that when you look at the mayor of the city of New York who has two houses in Park Slope.
De Blasio, I mean, right.
De Blasio. He has two houses in Park Slope, he's probably paying no money for those two houses in Park Slope. And then you look at somebody that lives somewhere in Queens, in the Bay Side of Queens, with a small house. He's paying, you know, out of their heads in taxes. Uh, the, the mayor has commissioned, a commission to actually take a look at the tax bills here in the city.
We're eight years later, what did he come up with?
Well, he hasn't come up with any.
Eight years.
He hasn't come up with any. So they have recommendations out there. But the problem with those recommendations is that he hasn't adhered to any of those recommendations. And I believe that he's not going to adhere to any of those recommendations because he's at the door. And so it's going to be up to the next mayor to actually take that up. My stance on this is that we're probably going to have to go a step further and go on a state level and try to work with our colleagues on the state side to have this data bottom, see if they can actually come up with a plan to actually go and tax it, that is, in a code that actually benefits everybody according to the value of the house. Rather than just taxing people out of their ears just because you have ran out of certain programs, that doesn't benefit you anymore. And so when I look at that commission that is put together by the mayor, I'm just simply saying, why are we wasting our time on that? People are suffering right now and what it should do actually, I know that taxes, the real estate taxes in the city serve to pay all kinds of services in the city. But the fact of the matter is, you're not going to fix this problem now. And for all indication, it's not going to be solved for another 10 years because it's just going to continue going on and on and on.
I, I just want to, a lot of times I do these events, people, I have to water, I'm not trying to be questioning the, um, the IQ or the understanding of the people listening to this, but I have to water down these things that we're discussing. If you went into a Warhammer Harkins or today and you stopped 20 people and you asked them, what is real estate in America based on? I have a feeling in our network, 10 people are going to say it's based on the board of education. People think that real estate tax is based solely on property tax. And people tell me some nice rich suburbs, they get, each kid gets a $2,000 MacBook, which might be true. They own the library, which when they go to science lab, retainer, forker, retainer, it's like a lot of this. Is, is, is there a lot of property tax that has to do with education?
Part of it goes into education, part of it goes into other services in the city, sanitation, we name it. All those things have to get paid by, by the revenues that is collected through property taxes, uh, which I understand clearly. But we can still do all those things without having to kill people on property taxes. Because the money that they're collecting from these property taxes, they don't necessarily, uh, those services don't necessarily go up, they stay constant to a certain level. So you really don't have to, uh, uh, take so many dollars out of people's pocket just to pay for the services. And remember, part of the education system is state and federal money anyway. So the contribution, for example, on the education side of where the real estate taxes go, is not that much that goes into, into supplying a good school. I mean, look at our schools today. If you were to take that one example and simply say, oh, my real estate taxes at work here in the city, somebody's going to have to answer to a lot of questions, right? So I don't believe that the, the city currently has the right formula, if you will, to tax the people on the property. So again, I think we're going to have to go on the federal level on this or state level, if you will, to actually get this in resolve.
So you would get at the city council, let's say. And this, just a quick synopsis, what could be done in a very, very short amount of time? Would you be lobbying on a regular daily basis that people that have these small condos shouldn't have to pay $12,000?
Oh, absolutely. I probably even go as far as ask for a moratorium on those taxes. Because you know what? If you stop belating those taxes in for, I don't know, a year or two, it's not going to kill the city.
Right.
It cannot, until you can find a solution. And by the way, if you do that, it's going to force them to find a solution sooner rather than later.
Okay, very good. Another very, 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 very hot topic, turn on CNN, Fox News, MSNBC, it's the only thing that's being discussed for the last year. And you have to bring it up because that's what people are available to. It became very cool for every politician across the borders to say that we want to focus on defunding the police. Now, I don't 100% understand even what the term of defunding the police. Um, obviously it became a very, 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 very hot topic after you were explored, we saw, you know, and many other cases where there's police brutality, which is terrible. Everybody condemned any act of police brutality. You know, police are public servants, um, and they have to go by the law. Police, what, you know, you can go to, people, police are also put into very, 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 very bad positions on a daily basis. You know, they stop people for traffic wise and the guy starts swinging and punching and some of the people are armed, you know, it does happen. Um, they're always scared and a lot of these things that happen with, a lot of the cases that come to the media as a picture are usually the police stops. I know when I got pulled over, upstate New York twice in the last three years, I was also scared, you know, you hear all these stories on the news, you know, you're holding your I actually asked a police officer, can I take my hands off the wheel? He starts laughing, he's like, I'm going to shoot you, people laughing at me. But I'm saying, it is, it is a very vulnerable moment and there are people that get very scared and they think the police are going to go after them and they right away get very, well, I'm not going to go into the whole debate, you know, it's, it's above tonight's conversation. At the end of the day, with there being rotten apples, there's always going to be a few rotten apples. I, I personally believe that most police are good people. It's a mope inning job, the risk is very high. You know, most people, you know, you go to your store, you're a doctor, you're a lawyer, you're a carpenter, you're, I don't, usually, you know, something could happen, you get hit by a truck, but you usually feel like you're going to get home mad. When you're a police officer, I mean, it's, it's a danger, it's a very dangerous job. Um, but at the end of the day, with there being bad rotten apples, there's always going to be some, I mean, we, we hope there'll be none. That's the hope. Proper training, proper recruitment, proper, in the community, people in the community policing each other, which I know is a very, very popular thing. And I, the best thing is if people in the community are policing people in the community, there'll be more respect. You'll feel like the people that are coming after you are your brothers and sisters. Again, my question is, at the end of the day, until everything is fixed and we live in a satanic perfect world, when there's a problem, you call 911. Obviously, there's nobody else to call, there's nobody else to call. So you call 911. So when I hear public officials, which is basically a lot, the overwhelming majority of public officials, maybe they're doing it because if they don't say it, they'll get into trouble with their constituents, say that they want to defund the police. First of all, what does that mean? In layman's terms, we're talking at elementary level, what does it mean when people say defund the police? If you, and more than that, if you defund the police, then crime, which is at an all-time high, I think we're both on agree with that, is at an all-time high, has to combat crime with less money in policing. So if you could please elaborate to the crowds, um, what, I saw your website, you did mention, again, I'm not pointing fingers, it's friendly conversation. I have not made up my mind who I'm voting for, we're not going to endorse any campaign tonight. But you do use the term defunding the police on your website. I didn't read it every detail, but in general, what does the term mean in a broader picture and what's your position on the term defunding the police? Again, which I'm not fully understanding, but you do.
Well, when you see that on my website, I can read a little further.
Right, obviously.
It was scary. It, it says that we need to actually divest some funding from the police budget. We have a balloon $5 billion police budget.
There's a $5 billion police budget here, we are sitting?
Yes.
So, so another thing that I, I try not to interrupt you. When I hear the words, the same way I said 78,000 for housing, $5 billion, it's, it's, when I hear numbers, a billion, a trillion, a lot of times my politicians are not, I'm saying in general, maybe that's very low, maybe we should be spending $7 billion. Can you explain to the crowd when people use the term $5 billion? We also have the biggest, we have the largest police force in the world in New York City. The New York City Police Force, I read in Times, or the Washington Post 15 months ago, they rated it. It was, it was more than most, the New York City Police Force is bigger than most armies in the world.
It is, it is a big police force, but I think that what we really need to focus is on masks. There's one thing, the police is a term that was used during the riots of, during the George Floyd, I don't want to call it riots, but protests in the city. And it has a lot of different meaning for different people. The way I look at it is, if the police department, the largest police department in the, in the country and in the world looking well, we need to really figure out whether or not the police department has all of the resources that they need. If they have all the resources that they need, how much does that cost? Does it cost the entire budget for the police department or does it not? And so when we look around the city and we look around services that are, for a lot of better, uh, words, are faulting in the city, you know, we need to really be conscious of the people you know, we need to really be conscious of the people in the city that could use some of that money. Right? Because I think that right now you have police officers that are in precincts today pushing paper.
Okay, so that's something I don't know.
Yeah, you're a police, you're a police officer, you should be doing community policing, being out there, doing the job that you're actually.
Okay, so here's something I love to tell the crowd. When, when most people in the media, people I watch on the news, they say defund the police, I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna be honest, they say that what they mean is that a lot of money that goes towards policing should be used for mental health counseling.
No.
Mental health professionals.
But what they're saying basically is, is that they wanna be able to get into the budget of the police department and try to determine how much of that money really is used for police work or for police needs. And in, in many instances, when you really look at the police department's budget, most of that money goes into salaries and pensions and all of these stuff. And so you have to really try to figure out, okay, do we really need to spend that much money on salary, pension, and all that stuff? How many people are at the retirement, retirement point that would actually be scaled back and then probably get new police officers?
So I didn't have this question prepared. Isn't that what we pay the controllers office with a couple of hundred employees to do?
You're probably right about that. But as a city council member, my job would be to actually sit down and really look at that budget. Really look at that budget line on end by line on end to see whether or not the police department really has what it needs to in order to function. Because if they don't, we want them to have what they need to function. I am not at the point for just absolutely shutting down the police, we don't need them, forget them. That is an absurd concept, it just doesn't make any sense. Because we do need law enforcement, and just like you mentioned a minute ago, crime is creeping up in the city at an alarming rate. And so those calls for just getting rid of the police is absolutely gonna fall on the, at least my death. Because I just don't think it makes sense. But I do think it makes sense for us to sit down as city council members and look at that budget and be honest about that budget and see, hey, you know what? We can cut you because right after COVID, every single aspect of that budget is gonna be affected. And so we're also thinking, we wanna give the police every ammunition and every tool to do their job. But I wanna see, okay, do you really need to have this piece here? Maybe we can put that to another job.
So, so let me, let me, I wanna go over it. Hector is saying that if there's people that really should have retired or they're, or they're not servicing their communities and they're in the police department and they're not cops on the streets, protecting people from crime, going to disputes, going, taking care of real policing, obviously, I think everybody in Queens, defund police that are not working. So it's not like defund police, let's get rid of a lot of the police. You're saying, so, so you're saying your interpretation of this huge, um, slogan, t-shirts, Facebook, get defund the police, it means that the city's desperate for money, there's a lot of cops that are probably pushing papers, sitting around in precincts doing nothing. So who would disagree with that?
Well, I mean, that.
But, but, but my question is, when you use, when you or other people use the term defund the police, I think, I might interpret it the way you're explaining it, it means that buildings are damaged, it's going into waste, police are not policing, are not doing their jobs, and who would disagree with that? Except maybe the guy that has a crucial job that's getting paid. But other people, people that are rioting for civil unrest, when they say defund the police, they mean abolish police, which is very fine, why?
They may have a different meaning, they may have a different meaning about that.
But that's not your meaning, that's not my meaning. My, my meaning is, you can't get rid of the police. I think that whole concept is just.
I, 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 that's what I, I said, I said ten minutes? Going on elementary level?
You can't, you can't, you can't get rid of the police. You know, you're right, something happened to you in the middle of the street, you're not gonna call a social service person. You're gonna call the police. I wanna call the police.
People may memes, you got memes, videos, jokes, you see a cop hold somebody over, a minute later, the guy's out of his car, swinging.
Well, he's still in the truck.
And you see a cop radioing, do we have a mental health professional on standby? Because a lot of politicians, they use the term mental health professional. But mental health, but you know what? It's getting away, I didn't know it was fun, I'm under fun. On the city, on, on the District Thirty-Five Council page, and I was reading up the description of what a council member of District Thirty-Five's position is, a lot of, a lot of things that come up are sanitation. You guys have a very, very big city, the sanitation department. As a matter of fact, there's a ton of green garbage cans on the street corners here, which are beautiful. It's not exposed garbage cans, these are metal around, metal encased around, they say, spats, not, um, tax, pay dollars, brought to you by, by Letitia James, or, you know, now she's, she's attorney. But I guess she, she got a lot of garbage cans on Kingston Avenue, she can take credit. Um, it's metal covered. Um, but I wanna discuss sanitation, not a lot of questions, and this is a big topic. And it sounds like sanitation is a big topic. The streets in our community are not clean.
I don't know.
But when I say they're not clean, I mean, I can show you videos, load you pictures, but you just walk around there, you see the streets are not clean. Another thing is, even though we implemented a lot of garbage cans here in Crown Heights, which I assume we have them in Crown Heights, at the street corner, I'm sure, all the entire District Thirty-Five garbage, I've not been all the area, probably have a lot of garbage cans. I find that a lot of the garbage cans are always full. So what happens is, people like know that they could go put garbage here, but there's no garbage. So what are they gonna do, put a carousel in their pocket? So they put it on top of the garbage, and the next guy puts one on top, and then, because there's really so much garbage, they put garbage on the floor next to it. But some of the garbage cans are over flooded, and then the next three, four feet, there's just garbage up in there. You gotta be blind not to see this, it's a pandemic, and that probably causes rats and rats, mice and rodents, I'm not a exterminator, but it's a mess. But that's one thing I want to address. Second thing is a hot topic, and I've been asking this question for thirty years, and I'm sure you're aware of it. The streets of Crown Heights, how many, I mean, you know, I'm sure, I don't know the other parts of District Thirty-Five, we have four times a week alternate sized street parking. Four times. So if you live on Montgomery Street, where I grew up on Montgomery Street, right here, three blocks away, Montgomery Street, I checked, Carroll President, a very, very, very big part of the county, the city council area that you're gonna represent, if you were to wear any one of your collies. Four times a week. Now, I don't think people understand the repercussions, if you don't have a car, or if you don't buy parking in a garage, which is not enough, obviously, um, mothers with five children at home, or two children, on a fourth floor walk-up, that wanna have luxury of owning a car, they have to go out, move the car, bring two kids with them, food cooking, potential to burn down the building, I mean, it ruins your life. The quality of life in Brooklyn, in our area, is, it really, really trims down to quality of life because Mondays and Wednesdays on this side, the Thursdays are Fridays and Saturdays. More than that, they give you a courtesy that you can double park, which is physically nowhere to put your car, the family's car. So they let you double park. So if you don't move your car, you have forty-five dollar tickets. If you move your car and you double park, there's nowhere to put your car, but you come a minute late in a hundred and fifteen dollar double parking ticket. I asked at least a double, a dozen politicians the last thirty years, why does Crown Heights have alternate sized street parking on the streets four times a week? I've never got the same answer twice. Which, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I will quote Ronald Reagan. Ronald Reagan says the most terrifying nine words he's ever heard was, was, "I'm here from the government, and I'm here to help you." Could somebody please tell me, the streets are not clean, we established that. Whatever these trucks do, they blow the garbage to this side, they blow the garbage. So what I believe, I'm putting it out of the bag, I believe it's some cooked up numbers that give billions and billions of dollars in fines. And maybe the sanitation union gets a lot of overcarves blown around those trucks. But I really wanna know if areas have alternate sized street parking once a week instead of four times a week, are they that much dirty here? Because that would have been something. And again, I'm not gonna quote names tonight of any politicians, but try yourself, you've asked five or ten politicians that are in office, why do you have alternate sized street parking? I've never got the same answer twice. One answer I got twice is that like fifty years ago, they said people from East Flatbush were parking closer in Crown Heights to get the train, and they were leaving their cars there all day, so the locals complained that they don't have parking, so they said that you have to move your car during the work today, so by ticketing that, I mean, even the best answer that's logical still makes no sense. I wanna know, has it been brought to your attention by other constituents? What's your opinion on it, and what would you potentially do in city council for this exact question?
Well, you, you gave it right off the nose, this is about revenue. That's all it is, it's, it's about revenue because if the city streets, especially here in Crown Heights, are dirty, obviously, there is a problem of the way in which the sanitation department exercises the, the work. I have to move my car just to give everybody else. And I would like to have my car.
So you own a car?
I do.
And you got a private parking?
A private district.
How you do it?
I, I, I move my car, I give everybody else, I just wanna give a ticket. And that's what the theory is, means is that I'd rather move my car at least once a week, at least once, so that they can do whatever they need to do, and then just leave me alone for the rest of the week. Right? Because I think that people are too busy and people just don't have, there's not enough parking spaces around the city streets to park cars anymore, it's just, it's small. And so the chances of you getting a spot to park your car, i- it's, it's just as, as, as no luck. So as a city council person, I would probably try to get legislation passed to actually cut back on those numbers because I can't frankly, if they cut back on those numbers.
On the number of times that we have to move our car?
Oh, this is what I wanna hear?
Because I think, I think if you move it four times in a week, and you, and you stretch, I mean, I can be driven by Montgomery between the Empire, obviously, uh, Bedford and Franklin Avenue, you see that, that, that garbage pile up there every city.
I haven't, I haven't had that before.
It, it is, it is horrendous. And so obviously, the sanitation department is not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And they can say, well, oh, well, it's COVID and we are quarantining, but now, but guess what? COVID subsides, and I'm still seeing the same problem. And so as a, as a city council, I would probably introduce legislation to cut all those four days to one day so that everybody knows on Wednesdays, on Mondays, on Fridays, whatever day you pick, it's cleaning day, you gotta move your car so that they can do what they need to do. And if you don't move it, you gotta take it, then it's up.
Um, very good. I'm happy to hear that, I'm sure a lot of people watching are happy to hear that it's being addressed and that might be some action coming. Here's another question, a quality of life question. Have you been in Crown Heights, you were here last year during the summer, July, August, last year? I, I don't know.
Where I live, every single night for about twenty-eight, twenty-nine nights, were fireworks going on for many, many hours. Did you hear the fire?
No, I am part of, of one Crown Heights, uh, rather than another.
Okay.
And that was an issue that came up again and began to begin last summer, trying to figure out how to stop these fireworks from actually really going off every day, in the neighborhood.
Okay, so let me, let me just address it because it went on every single night for many, many hours. There were times it was two to three minutes, not even a two or three minute break. My kids were waking up terrified. Terrified, it sounded like gunshots, I mean, it hurts, yeah, some of them do. It was, it was very self-evident that the police made up that they're not gonna respond to this. When you call 911, they hang up on you, or they told you to call 311. When you called 311, they said they're gonna file a complaint, but they don't feel it's necessary. We had nobody to turn to, this went on for a month straight. Nobody slept, fireworks all night. Um, I'm not gonna say his name, but somebody that's writing for mayor was asked about this, there's a video, you can watch it. And he said that it would be racism to call the police on somebody doing this. I'm not even sure what that means.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I don't know what that means. What he says, he's writing for mayor, today I might even endorse him, because he's a pretty solid guy. But the people in power did not take it, and I really feel like it was really, 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 really terrible that the police, or the city, or everyone's in charge made up not to address the topic. Were you to be in the city council, and something of quality of life issue came up, where there were fireworks every single night for hours, what would you, what would be your approach?
Oh, I will speak to the precinct commander. We have to have a curfew on those.
I will put a curfew.
A curfew?
Yeah, I would definitely say you can actually fire up a firework, but after a certain time, you gotta stop, seven, eight o'clock.
Oh, okay. After the firework, you're gonna be gagged.
No, 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 it, it's, after a certain time, you have to stop. I, I, first of all, just on the record, I don't think fireworks are legal in New York City at all. And that, and that's.
I don't, I think fireworks are illegal to be given, so I don't know if a curfew would work.
I think, I think that you have to really go to the precinct commander and say, look, we're gonna put a timeline on this. Okay, I, 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 I will work with the precinct commander to say, what time do you think is the appropriate time to stop this? Eight o'clock? Okay, eight-thirty? Nine o'clock?
And what would happen if fireworks were coming from a certain building on Rogers Avenue?
That's, that's, that's unacceptable. How can fireworks come from a building? I mean, from a.
Roof tops.
From the roof, then that's unacceptable.
But then you, but then you're gonna have to go and you're gonna have to.
And correct.
Exactly, you're gonna have to.
But this went on for a month, and there was no response?
Because nobody cared. Nobody stopped the, nobody went to the police commander, uh, in the seminor, and say, this has gotta stop. You gotta go to those buildings because that could be dangerous for the people that live in the same.
Did you, I'm just curious, at the time, even though you're not, you weren't elected, but you were, what was your, what was your approach? I'm saying, did you have any hands-on with this?
I didn't have any on my problem at all. What I heard about it happened across many areas in Crown Heights.
Because there was one lady that approached the neighbors to stop it, and they shot her dead.
I didn't know that.
That I didn't know.
Yeah, but that, but that is front of, that is exactly the, the point that I'm trying to make. The, 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 the precinct commander is the person that actually has to stop it. And you better hold them accountable and responsible.
And what happened?
But what happens if one precinct, one, one Penn Plaza, maybe, whatever we said against the governor, against the mayor, inner politics going on, where they make a decision that they're not gonna respond to something?
Well, you're gonna tell you something, if you don't make enough noise, he's not gonna stop.
Right.
Right? So if you go to the precinct commander and he doesn't do it, then you're gonna have to escalate it. And then you're gonna have to put in a police commissioner's desk if you have to, and say, this is a problem, this is a serious quality of life problem, and you gotta do something about it. And just put him on blast because you're gonna have to do it that way. This is my district, and if you're not gonna do something about this problem that is affecting, you know, community residents, then I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to escalate.
Do you, do you, do you believe, you don't have to answer this question, because, you know, it's being watched by a lot of people. Do you believe that it was a decision made because of the strong cause of defunding the police, the police telling the people, you wanna defund us, take care of it on your own?
I wouldn't be surprised about that. I wouldn't be surprised at all.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask a question, this was like Luther Ruth also, and it, it kinda ties into everything we discussed in the comment. On January first, twenty twenty, the criminal justice reform and bail bill was passed in Albany. Now, I understand the city council, by the way, a lot of times they ask things to people running politics or people that are already elected, they say, oh, that's state, that's federal, and it's federal, and states, the city council, the assembly. It's like, I one time asked somebody running for mayor, I'm not gonna say his name, he came within a few points of beating Booker. I asked him about what is he gonna do about all the post offices over here? Terrible, terrible, I asked the federal, and he, oh, it's a federal, I have nothing to do with it. And by the way, he tells me, all the post offices I go to are lovely, I wouldn't change anything. All right. But, um, the, 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 um, the January first, the land to effect, um, where basically ninety percent of people arrested in New York City don't have to pay bail. Not only do ninety percent of people that are arrested now do not have to get cash bail, cash bail, many, many people that were not eligible to go out on bail, murder or attempted murder, aggravated assault, again, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I didn't read up exactly the laws preparing for this, I should have, but I'm saying, you can just say it the way it is. Many, many, it's a very, very long bill. But the most popular parts of this bill that I wanna address to you tonight are that there's almost no more cash bail anymore. And number two, very, 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 very violent criminals that get arrested are able to be released, which for, I don't know, maybe the last fifty years, were not able to be released in trial, jury, they'd be convicted for some of these offenses, I would hope they can convict, convict, a conviction. Either a plea deal or a jury trial, obviously, they'll be convicted. The DA takes the case, you knew it would, it's just the way it is, statistic. My question is, it's a double, triple question. Number one is, what's your opinion on this cash bail thing? Second of all, what we're finding in our community is, is that the most crazy situation, people get punched in the face in broad daylight, women, children, people that are competitive offenders and break into homes, dangerous criminals. It's a miracle if they get caught or apprehended. But when they are apprehended, there are, there are, sometimes they're back on the streets here a day or two later. It's catch and release, catch and release, catch and release. So I believe that crime going up, a lot of it doesn't even have to do with COVID or anything else, I think that we're literally putting criminals on the streets. And it's extremely dangerous, and the quality of life here in New York City is really, really diminishing, besides for the high property taxes, besides for the high taxes, besides for everything else we spoke about, fireworks going on all night for months straight, but we're literally putting dangerous criminals on the streets. Um, I just wanted to know what your opinion on cash bail, maybe reinstated cash bail, high cash bail. I don't mind if it's a million dollars, the guy's dangerous, I don't want him on the streets. And the reason why you put a million dollars cash bail is whoever's putting the funds is gonna make sure he ain't running anywhere, which would make sure also that he's not caught again. I think cash bail on the economy makes sense to me. Family and friends have to put their house on the line, you're gonna be hated. So the general idea of cash bail, going back to the way it was. And even if it was a broken system the way it was until now, now, we're literally putting dangerous criminals on the streets, which are gonna, which is gonna cause violent convictions, felons on the street, and police, people being hurt and murdered. Um, and you, what's your take on stopping it, and how do you, what's your take on how it even got passed?
Um, and you, what's your take on stopping it? And how do you, what's your take on how it even got passed? But the people that voted on this, all the people in Albany, like, did they high, high IQs? Like, I mean, I, I. It wasn't intentional to put criminals on the street. I don't want, I don't wanna accuse somebody of doing that, but.
No, we don't, we don't have to accuse anybody of doing that, but I think we have to be able to amend that, right? Because I think that people that are violent criminals should not be in the street. I mean, that goes without saying. You really have to be, uh, of a different thinking to think that that is, that is acceptable. But I, I think that small petty offenses that, you know, don't amount to, uh, to a large cash situation. I think those, you can actually be, you should use your judgment as to whether or not somebody who, you know, went into a store, stole a candy bar, a candy bar, needs to go to jail. But somebody that actually is a repeat offender, repeat, repeat criminal, that has actually been to jail before, and now because of this law, if he does it again, he's not gonna be penalized. I definitely think that piece of the law should actually be, uh, uh, reformed, revised, taken out, whatever you wanna call it. But it has to change, because people are not safe in the street today. And by the way, just talking about COVID, I think that part of the, part of the violence that is existing in the city today is part COVID. Because there's a lot of people with mental health issues on the street, and actually misgiving out there. But part of it is also the people that are getting out of jail because they get caught and then released again, they're actually not, not making the law, you know, a will up there. So I'm not in favor of the cash and release. I don't think that you should put some guy that steals a candy bar in jail or under the jail forever. But I think that violent offenders, those are the ones who should actually keep in jail, period. It just doesn't have any discussion.
What, what, what do you say about the broken window theory? You do a small crime, you don't get punished hard enough, you end up going to a bigger crime.
I, I say what they say marijuana gateway drug. Yeah, but that's sometimes opinion. I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily true. I've seen a lot of people that I, I mean, I grew up with guys that stole candy bar. And so they're doctors, and they're lawyers, and they're everything else. So I don't necessarily believe somebody else's opinion about breaking, uh, window, period. But I do believe that if you go and you steal a candy bar, then you end up being a Charlie Manson. Then you should, you should, you should go to jail. And they, they should lock you up forever if that's necessary, and not release you. But I, I, I don't think that, that, that law is, it's, it's acceptable here in New York City, especially not here in New York City.
Okay, so here's another hot, hot topic item. Um, the over, over, overwhelming majority of the Jewish community residing here at Crown Heights. I would even say a hundred percent. I mean, I'm great at that, a hundred percent. Um, I don't believe there's even one kid, maybe, I don't, again, I can run. Nobody goes to public school there. Everybody's going to private schools. Um, and even though we established that an hour ago, that property tax is not the only thing that goes toward schools, it's also kind of other type of funding.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if you want to get your opinion on the public. First of all, what do you believe about vouchers? Not only for Jewish schools, but in general, vocational schools across the country, but here in local and city. Do you believe that people should maybe get an opportunity of getting per child a voucher? Let's say it costs the average American child to go to a public school eleven thousand dollars. Some states, of course, they're twenty thousand, some are not, they're worse than education. Some of the schools that have like, lowest I've ever heard in America, they pay for a child is fifty-six hundred dollars. I don't even know where, I'm not even sure where it was. But um, there are states that certain counties do give city vouchers. And I heard that makes the local public schools better, because other schools are fighting for the funding, so they have to get more competitive. A little bit turning the government a little capitalistic, but which should not always be the case, obviously. But I'm saying, general idea, have you ever given any thought to the idea of giving vouchers?
Full vouchers. It will help the school, it will help the student, it will help the family. I just think it's a good idea, because the school system that we have in New York City is by far a terrible, terrible condition right now. I think that everybody that has got a child in public school, have a lot of friends in college, who do have children in public school, they, they are so terrified of the type of education that they're getting, that they're really not sure what they're gonna do. And a lot of them can't afford private school. And so I think that a voucher is a good idea, to be able to actually give people the opportunity to, you know, have a better education system within the city. Because this is the first year's public school have gotten full funding, if you, if you read about that. Other years, they have not been full funding for their, for their school, and for the children, uh, uh, for, for pupil. And I think that that's probably one of, I believe that it's gonna go back to the state and the federal government still being short on city schools here in New York City especially. And so a voucher would come in as a good thing, it would actually subsidize for that, right? Because it would be able to, uh, be as a parent to say, "Well, I can send my kid to school now, because maybe the schools are gonna improve with that extra money that is already coming."
So you're pro vouchers?
Possibly.
Right, and they're not, they're pro vouchers.
I mean, and nobody even talks about it, because nobody wants to actually really put the school system on display, right? Because right now with COVID, you can actually see all the pimples in the school, and what is wrong with the schools. And so they don't wanna add to that problem, because vouchers would now, you know, sort of like give the city a blind eye, because they have.
So you're pro vouchers, you're pro vouchers?
I'm pro vouchers.
So people looking at eight thousands and thousands of children going to private schools? Hector Robinson gets into the city council, he's gonna put up to a agenda. Public school kids get ten thousand per kid, the local kids here, we get ten thousand dollars, their own private schools. Why not?
Best thing I ever heard.
No, why not?
I don't see the downfall to this. I don't see any, any.
But you know, the opposition to this is like one of the strongest organizations in almost every state in the world.
Yeah, but, well, you don't like to sell what, so you're not gonna, you're not gonna propose an alibi.
So are you, are you, you're probably not being encouraged by the school unions.
Listen, the school union, here's, here's my problem with that. Like, my problem with the school unions is that the school union is politicized. This is, this is supposed to be serving students, school, making the best decision possible for students, making the best decision possible for parents. This is not politics. And I don't think they get that. I think that they think that they have to be all in into politics in order to make a better school for the city. Has that worked all these years? None. So what's wrong with that? What's wrong with a way of actually looking differently at making education better in New York City?
I think this is music to my ear, and I think you should come out strong about this.
I, I think that, I think that you gotta push it. If somebody doesn't like it, then you gotta explain why you like it. But you gotta explain, and they gotta explain to you why they don't like it.
So I was speaking to some local restaurant owners here in the community. Uh, again, there's people, there's only a few people, and a few people own restaurants in the community, I'm saying. Need a lot of people to support any restaurants. And they are fuming. The health department here, like, when they come for an inspection, they want them to find something. Because they look for problems. So if they don't find a problem, then you're really in trouble. It's terrifying. They say like, they, they write them up, and they have to go and spend a day of work going and fighting. Funds are extremely expensive. Almost every local business owner, restaurant owner, I told him, I'm not gonna mention his name, I don't know if you did, to help the park, something like that. He said, no matter how many times they cleaned the counters and had the best cooling and refrigeration, and no matter how many people in the restaurant have got the proper certification, the mugs, no matter what you do, no matter what you do. Like, one restaurant said that they like, the health department asked the worker, was this in the fridge for two hours, like in the local fridge? And the guy's like, "No." And then he's writing up a violation, and then he came running up, and he's like, "It hasn't been there, it was just made it forty-five minutes ago." It, it just feels like that. It just feels like, have you, like, what do you, you don't wanna get food poisoning. I totally own the health department regulating restaurants. But I don't know, I think it's being done in a way that local restaurants feel terrified. But not only the Jewish community, all the guys that have the bush guards, everybody seems.
It's across the city.
It's across the whole city. It's terrible.
It is across the city. And I think that, I, I, I'm not gonna give an opinion of something that I'm not world first, but I think that the first thing that I would do coming to the council is to take a look at the guidelines. What exactly the health department does, how they do it, what are they, how they find people and why. And then see whether or not there is any room in there for improvement, because you can't possibly find everybody for every little thing, especially when it doesn't violate something that makes people sick. And so I would have to get familiar with that and be able to make an intelligent decision as to, okay, we need to change these guidelines. Yes or no?
Okay, another, another, another topic I really, I was thinking of not bringing up, but it would be tomorrow morning, when I go to sitting, like, everybody would say like, "You didn't ask the question." The amount of questions I have in my inbox about tonight's event, I almost thought you were running to be Prime Minister of Israel. It would be like, you were giving it to them. I mean, everybody is talking about Israel, because it's a lot of Jewish people in the current Jewish community. And they feel like Israel is always targeted, and ostracized, and pointed out. So I'm, I'm not gonna go into the whole thing, because you're not running to be a GNSA member, you're not running to be Prime Minister. But a big question that everybody asks about it, because they're scared, is that a lot of city councils across the entire America, but this is thirty-fifth district, talk about BDS. If they're gonna punish Israel through BDS, boycott, divest, and veer away from Israel. Um, sanction, boycott, divest, sanction. Have you, are you familiar with the BDS movement? And what's your opinion, if you want to say your opinion?
I did, I did read about the BDS, and, um, it's we have to really start by, by understanding how far back this all comes with us. And if you watch out here?
Yeah, it's like, I'll give a.
But, but I, I, I don't think that, I mean, Israel, Israel is, it's a sovereign country. Right? And they, it, it's just like being walking in the street, somebody starts, you're gonna slap that. So I, I just don't think that, I think what most people have a problem with is, okay, so if you get slapped and you slap back, that's okay, but if you get slapped and you come with a sledgehammer, then, you know, the fight is uneven. Uh, I just think that people don't understand the, the region, first of all, they don't understand the history, second of all. And I think that most people that actually jump on bandwagons really need to take the time to actually read about what's really what the issues are within the two parts in, in that part of the country.
So, so, so let me, let me just, let me just. We're not, we're not here to discuss everything. Obviously, my opinion, I'm a tremendous supporter of the state of Israel. And they, obviously, I'm gonna say they have the right to defend themselves no matter what, they have to protect their ten and a half, eleven million citizens. And I believe, I'm of the opinion that Israel could have been the most peaceful, loving country for everybody in the world to live in. And I believe that a lot of it goes on its one side. But again, that's my opinion. But I believe that when two hundred and ten Democratic elected officials voted not to give Israel just ammunition to defend themselves, I believe that the, the, um, Israel public in America, a lot of it is being triggered by antisemitism in America, that people use Israel as an opportunity to bring out antisemitism.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
But, but another, but, but the bottom line is, and I have to ask you, if God forbid, a city council resolution came up in the city council in New York City, um, to vote to be part of the BDS movement in the thirty-fifth district, what would your vote be?
I, it would not.
So Hector Robinson is against anything to do with BDS.
I, I said, I appreciate it, I, yeah.
And it means a lot to my constituents that you would never be part of anything with BDS.
Look, we have a lot of problems in this city, and we need to focus on those problems. And so no, my answer would be never.
A lot of people in politics, maybe that, uh, uh, in American knowledge, a lot of people make this a big priority.
Well, they, you know, when, when, when things like that happen in Israel, you have to know, there is an agenda behind it. Every single mother may have an agenda behind it. I don't know what that could be, but there is always one. And so without really, you know, a, a lot of these politicians don't, don't even really sit down to read what those issues are before they get into the public. So I, I just don't think.
Just curious, have you ever been to Israel?
I did not, but a lot of friends of mine have, and they keep urging me to go visit.
Is that something you consider, um, yourself?
Interesting. Yeah, I would join you on the trip.
Absolutely, I would like to see that. Um, it's eight o'clock.
Yes.
Um, I, I want to thank you very, very much for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
And speaking to the community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you to COO all for broadcasting this event. Thank you to all the organizers, and, um, remember, everybody has to go and vote. If you don't vote, don't wake up one day and say, "If only I would have gone and voted." Whoever you vote for, June twenty-second, Tuesday, June twenty-second. Um, if you can vote in person, mail in votes. If you don't feel comfortable voting, if you wear a mask, double mask, triple mask, whatever you wanna do. Um, probably Uber, or all these companies, a lot of them sponsor, I'm sure we call the community council there. I'll send you a ride, the elder people, and I'll send one of the accessory packages, or reach out to the communities. Sorry? Whatever, however it is, whoever you have to reach out to, um, go and vote June twenty-second, the Democratic primaries, for city council, for mayor, for judge, there's a lot of important, important stuff on the ballot box. And if you did not vote, you have no, you have no right to an opinion on who was, uh, elected. Make your voices heard.
Or even complain.
Or even complain.